Good evening and welcome, everybody. It is 7:00 PM on Tuesday, December 11, 2018. And with the quorum present, I’m calling this meeting of the Wausau Common Council to order. We will begin tonight’s proceedings with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please press yes to take roll call. We have ten members present.
And Mr. Nutting is not here. He’s ill tonight. So, moving on, we have a presentation night for the Mung Wausa Festival. And my good friend Yi Ling Zhang is here to present it. Going over our events from this last July. So, welcome Yi. But for the record, if you could state your name and address, please.
Sure. My name is Yi Ling Zhang. I am not a resident of the city of Wausau, but my address is 4809 Augustine Avenue, Weston, Wisconsin, 50476. Before I start, I just want to invite my other committee members. Can you guys hear me? Is that loud? Okay. Oh, okay. I just want to invite my other committee members to join me up here. John Zhang, who is the vice chair of the Mung Wausa Festival. Fong Mo, who is also, who is now the vice chair of entertainment for the Mung Wausa Festival. And C. Zhang, the program manager for the Mung Wausa Festival as well. So, first and foremost, Mayor Robert Milkie, President Rand Smithson, members of the city council, and department heads, and the viewing audience. It is definitely a pleasure to be able to be here today to present about the Mung Wausa Festival to each and every single one of you. I know that the city of Wausau has always been a huge supporter of the Mung Wausa Festival. So, I just want to say thank you on behalf of the local clan leaders and on behalf of the Mung American Center. We thank you for that. But before I even go into more details explaining about the Mung Wausa Festival, I felt the need to show you guys what the Mung Wausa Festival is like. So, we have a short slide, video for everybody to see first. So, I promised not to take up too much time, but I just wanted to run over a few facts or some data from the Mung Wausa Festival. In 2000, during the Mung Wausa Festival, it was held on July 28th and 29th of this, of 2018. We were expecting to get about 10,000 individuals, but unfortunately, we didn’t get that number. And I’ll go exactly into why we didn’t get that number.
You still did very well.
Thank you. We really appreciate that. We had over 8,000 attendees, over 1,000 competitors, and hundreds of vendors from all across the country. We had dance groups that came all the way from Colorado to compete here, and we had teams come from all the way from California to compete during our festival as well. Just a little, so, facts, you know, some data that was collected by the Convention and Visitors Bureau and the Department of Tourism. The hotel rooms, in 2017, we booked a total of 1,376. In 2018, we have 2,100 hotel rooms booked. That was a 52.6 percent increase. Hotel revenue, 2016, was $121,294. In 2018, it was a $212,247. That was a 75 percent increase. As regard to economic impact, in 2017, it was a $1.03 million economic impact. In 2018, it was a $1,775,965. That was a 71 percent increase in one weekend. So, that was some of the data that we wanted to share a little bit to the city council, obviously, and also those that are listening. Some of the additions that we decided to add this year was obviously senior soccer, was for anybody that was 40 years and older, not necessarily senior, but that’s what we, that’s what they call it. I never called it that way.[493.12][493.12](Laughter). In addition to that, we collaborated with the Badger State’s game, which made us different than any other Mung festival in the country. There was no such collaboration with any other Mung festival in the entire country here. So, that made us unique and different. In addition, we also put together a night market, which was also unique and different than any other festival across the country here. When I say festival, I’m talking about the Southeast Asian or Mung festivals specifically. We, in addition, last year, in 2017, we, there was some, there were some feedbacks about the layout of the parks, because we had vendors down and curling away. We took the advice of a lot of the attendees and moved all the vendors to the south parking lot at the park, and that was widely accepted by many of the attendees. In addition, we were the only Mung festival to provide a golf cart shuttle service to the attendees that were there. So, individuals who were elderly or who had some sort of disability or some sort of needs, they were able to get that assistance treated and transport them from one place to the other, and that was heavily used. We didn’t expect it to be that, to be that busy. So, it was really, really remarkable. But just to run over some of the challenges and obstacles that the Mung Wausa Festival experienced, obviously. Number one was parking. Parking was a very difficult problem for us to deal with, because there was not enough parking on-site for the individual, for the attendees. Plus, we wanted to say, keep the, you know, the curling way as clear as possible in case of any emergency that should occur. Second was obviously, like I mentioned before, the golf cart shuttle services. That was heavily used, so then oftentimes, individuals who really needed it were not able to get that services that was needed. So, the plan next year is obviously to get more golf carts to be able to handle the situation. But one thing I also want to acknowledge was the safety and security of all the attendees that were at the festival. The largest festival in the country is the International Freedom Festival that’s held in the Twin Cities. During that festival, there’s as much as 30,000 to even 50,000 individuals that attend that festival in the weekend. Unfortunately, this past year, there was a shooting that occurred that ended up resulting in the loss of an individual. Unfortunately, this event happened just a couple weeks prior to our event, and this deterred a lot of individuals from coming to join our event. We went through almost a 75 percent turnover in competition judges. We had vendors who did no-shows, because they were worried that something may happen. But I do want to say a huge thank you to our, to our, to our, through the Wausa Police Department, specifically to Chief Benjamin Bliven, Captain Todd Bayton, and the, all the officers there who made, who made safety possible. You know, they jumped right on as soon as I sent them an email, then they jumped right on, came up with a plan of action, and we were able to ensure the safety of everybody that was involved there. So, I just want to say a huge thank you to them and acknowledge them for that as well. So, obviously, talking about some more fun things, you know, what, what can we do next year that will make us, you know, what can, what are some plans for next year? This past year, we also did some street performances, you know, having magicians, et cetera, on the streets that kind of made it, you know, on the, during the, in the vendor alley. And this really was widely accepted by the Mung community. They were really, they really enjoyed that. So, our plan is this year is to bring more diverse acts on the vendor alleys to just kind of attract people, whether it’s juggling, or whether it’s magicians or musicians, but having them on the vendor alley to kind of create a festivity feeling to the, to the festival. Because during the festival, there’s obviously sports and competitions, but everybody is also there for fun and entertainment. We’re planning to do, create more dance groups, obviously, dance categories for younger dance groups to be able to have the opportunity to compete, because, because we’ve realized that there has been a market for these, I hate to call it market, but a market for these individuals to compete. And oftentimes, in festivals throughout the entire country, there’s only one, one dance division, and you have these individuals, these younger individuals who have never really had that experience compete against these dance groups that have been dancing for 10-plus years. So, on top of that, we also are planning to increase our stage size and tent size, because we had a lot of feedback from the, from the dance schools in the Twin Cities who are, who has expressed interest in coming to Wausau to compete. These dance schools have dance group, they have multiple dance groups that has 10-plus individuals. So, if you think about 10 dance groups from Minnesota, 10 individuals, that’s 100, that’s 100 dancers plus their family and members, et cetera, who will be there for the whole weekend to perform, or to watch them perform. In addition, we are obviously considering adding the top spinning or thulu competition that has been recommended by our attendees. And we are also trying to encourage a more wide variety of ethnic vendors, whether it’s Hispanic food, Indian food, or whatever. We are trying to branch ourselves and have more variety of food vendors there available. Just another few facts, though. I had the committee members, the committee, we had 38 committee members that helped plan this event, each of them chairing their own department. What was really remarkable was that 16 out of the 38 committee members were younger than 25 years old. If the, if half of the committee were women or young, they were all young leaders. And, you know, it was remarkable at the energy and how determined they were to help make this event a wonderful event. So, in conclusion, I just want to say a big thank you to Mayor Bob Milkie for assisting us with the grant process, along with Finance Director Grote for the, for the assistance through this. Because of the grant that we see, we received from the tourist group, or the Room Tax Fund, we were able to help, we leveraged that fund and used that to match a $16,000 grant from the state of, from the state of Wisconsin Department of Tourism, which was only as possible, obviously, because of that grant from you guys. In addition, I just want to say a huge thank you to the City-County Parks Department. They were wonderful. So, it just, Bob Stevens, along with all his stick, his crew, they were wonderful in helping making this event occur. And again, I just want to say a huge thank you to Chief Bliven and his crew for helping us with safety concerns. So, if there’s any questions, I would be more than willing to entertain those questions.
Well, first of all, and I tell you this every time I see you, I always envy your energy and how you get things done. Your turn is coming, though, at 53. But in all seriousness, this is a very important event. It’s one that the city fully supports. But again, what I enjoyed, I spent the majority of the weekend down there back in July, and it was a perfect weather, a little hot, but we’ll take that compared to what we have right now.
Yes.[918.88][918.88](Laughter).
But the thing that I loved about it the most is that it was positive. It was fun. People were enjoying themselves, not to mention the economic impact. So, it really does affect the city of Wausau in a very good, positive way, and I thank you. Two years, I know you’re getting down on yourself, to have 8,000 people down there. And I know there were some issues, that type of thing, on the week before, but just the same, a resounding success. So, well done. Congratulations to you and to your committee. Guys, smile. It’s a good thing, okay?
It would have never been, you know, if I was alone, I alone ran that event, it would have never been possible. It was because of all the, you know, planning committee members, who are 38 of them, along with the hundreds of volunteers who travel all across the state to help us, that was, that made it possible.
It’s a good community with a lot of good people. Mrs. Tow.
Thank you, Yi Ling, so much for providing the presentation. I don’t think you give yourself and your team enough recognition. I just want to share that in your second year of the inception of this festival, I would like everyone to understand that this is one of the, the second-largest, you know, festival that’s led by a Mung nonprofit organization. And to compare us to the Twin Cities, you and your team and your committee have come a long way. I heard many great things this year about how it was, it was family-friendly. You added the night market or in the night festival, which was completely different than what I’ve seen throughout the country. And so, I commend you on that. I appreciate all the donors and all those that provided grant opportunities to make this community engagement festival, you know, available for the Wausa community. I also want to share that not only just the economic impact, but the economy of scale of what you’ve done through your leadership to really grow what festivals can really do, to bring enriched culture to, to entire community. So, thank you very much on that. I do share the same concerns about parking. I guess I’m one of those privileged, you know, people who get a VIP sticker, and I really don’t get to see where everyone’s parking. But I actually got the opportunity to go over to the southeast side, and I remember I was so terrified, because the southeast, you know, community was complaining about balloon rally and rid fest and about the parking situation there. And when I got the opportunity to drive by, because my church is actually over there at Pilgrim Lutheran Church, I was so amazed by how many cars were parked over there, but I was terrified at what the southeast community would say on their Facebook page about all the parking. So, I would, I would hope that in, in the future, in 2019, when your team puts this together, that you collaborate with our metro transit to see if we can provide some kind of relief and opportunity, like what we’ve done with the balloon rally. That would be an opportunity to look into. I want to talk about the Room Tax Grant opportunity that the city of Wausau has provided for your organization. Very appreciative. I hope that that continues, and I hope that that continues to grow, because it looks like this festival is here to stay, and it’s a great thing. And just thank you very much for all that you do and everyone else. I do also want to share that before this festival started, I’m not part of Yi Ling’s committee, but I did have some concerns as a council member, and I reached out to Chief Bliven, because I was there in the Twin Cities when the shots were fired and a young individual was gunned down. My children were actually in the area buying stuff, and you would, you wouldn’t think like things like that would happen. And it really sent alarms, and I emailed Chief Bliven right away. He said, you know what? We have already had discussions with Yi Ling. We have a tactical plan in place. You know, security shouldn’t be a concern. So, thank you so much for, you know, the city staff, the Wausa PD, the Sheriff Department, those that are involved in providing the safety for, for citizens and those that attended. So, thank you so much, Chief Bliven and your team. And I just want to add one more thing that, something I don’t see often at Mung festivals is that healthcare systems partnering up with some of our organizations. I saw Ascension Health Systems there providing first aid for both days, knowing that in July and August are hottest days and where athletes can be dehydrated or attendees may not be able to handle the heat. And thank you so much for them for partnering with the Mung American Center for, for that great service to the community. Thank you.
Mr. Peckham.
Thank you. I would just, as the alderman for the west of Grand Avenue Aldermanic District, I could pleased to say that the number of parking complaints and complaints about the additional activity totaled zero.
Well, thank you.[1229.33][1229.33](Laughter). Yeah. Well, I just want to say thank you for the continuous support.
Well done to all of you. Congratulations. Looking forward to 2019.
Thank you.[1242.15][1242.15](Applause).
And then, moving on, we have a number of residents that would like to speak tonight. I’m going to start with Matt Capadice. Gosh, I hope I said that right, Matt.[1256.83][1256.83](Laughter). Correct me, and then please state your address and limit your comments to three minutes, please.
My name’s Matt Capadice. I reside at 9602 Newberry Drive in Weston. I’d like to take the time of day to discuss this resolution we were discussing from the Planning Commission about the height of the sign at the Time Federal Savings Bank. A lot of effort went into this. This started back in June. We were told originally to go up as high as 30 feet. There was no need to do that. So, what we had done was, we came up to a 16-foot height is what we were looking at, feeling that was well within what we were originally told. The reason for the 16 feet, that would seem so important, is because of the EMC, the Electronic Matches Center, which is located below the sign, can be seen at a six-foot height. So, when we looked into the demographics of the sign and all, an average SUV is approximately 6 feet tall. And at that intersection, right now, the bank is claiming that, you know, not many people can see it when there is traffic stopped, they’re even going by with other vehicles. This would keep the EMC above the six foot or right at the six-foot height, which would give the whole sign the actual height, is what we were trying to achieve. Last week, or a couple weeks ago at the Planning Commission, meaning it was decided, they were looking at 10 feet now instead of the 16, and then Mr. Peckham had decided to, he had brought up, why don’t we compare it to the Thunder Lube sign, which it looks like from the picture that was shown, that it was approximately 13 feet tall. So, the following day, I went out there and I measured that sign, and it does sit on a hill, and the bottom of that sign is actually five feet, six inches above the street level. Taking that into consideration, it puts that sign at 15 feet, six inches above the street level. Looking back at Time Federal’s sign that we’re looking at, at a 16-foot, it actually sits down in a hollow, approximately 16 inches, which in essence, the finished product would be approximately 15.6 when done. So, we were hoping that we could come to a consensus to leave the sign at 16 feet, being compared to Thunder Lubes, and we wouldn’t need to change any plans. And Time Federal also, in their mass marketing, all the signs that they’re doing in Medford, Marshfield, Wausau, are all at that height already, and the other two cities have granted it at that height, so they wanted to keep it that way. So, I’m just asking for your support in that.
So, what you’re asking for is that to go back up to 16 feet, which is what you had originally proposed at the Plan Commission, but because of the Thunder Lube, it was a little bit higher. And if I’m correct, I’m trying to look at the notes here. Because Plan Commission approved, if I recall, it was like 13 feet or something like that. So, basically, what is your timeframe right now? Do you plan on putting that up here in the winter, closer to spring, or what? Because we can’t just arbitrarily say, sure, we’re going to switch it to 16 feet tonight. It would have to either be tabled or brought back to Plan Commission.
Oh, we’re looking at probably, I would say, in the next few months, if not in the spring, depending on, we’re trying to get the whole sign package for all three locations at the same time.
Okay, so, far.
I don’t, like I said, I’m not looking to say, yeah, to prove today, but looking at, that is being considered, and we are looking to keep it at 16 of it, you know. If there’s any, I guess, disagreements with that, I’d like to, I guess, answer some questions, if anybody has any.
Okay. All right, then. Thank you, sir. Next up, Jessica Sharkey, please.
Jessica Sharkey, 1498 Roberts Road, Mosony, Wisconsin. I’m just appealing my bartending license. I got denied, and I was really, really, really hoping to get this. I understand I accidentally lied when I was applying, but it was an honest mistake, and I would, I didn’t mean to do it on purpose, and...
Did you come and speak before the Public Health and Safety?
Yes.
Okay. Anything else you want to add as far as for council consideration?
That’s pretty much it.
Okay. Don’t want to describe what happened, or the mistake, or anything like that?
Well, the mistakes, there was, really, it was my friends, and I was just in the wrong place at the wrong time, hanging out with the wrong people, and I would never, ever do something like that again. And I would be horrified if it happened in front of me to somebody else.
And how long ago did this happen?
Seven years ago.
Okay. All right. Anything else you’d like to add? Okay. All right, then. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, please, Ms. Judith Miller. Good evening.
I’m Judith Miller of 903 Kick Bush Street, Wausau, and I’m here representing Citizens for a Clean Wausau. I’m here to ask the city, to ask this council, to authorize more soil testing in Riverside Park and the Thomas Street Road reconstruction area. The evidence of levels of contamination that exceed Wisconsin DNR standards has been provided to you, and the statement of Dr. Stephen Lester, lead toxicologist, on the Love Canal contamination has been read into the council record. As Dr. Lester pointed out, the Wisconsin DNR letter report did not address the cancer risk in this area, an omission that is not in accordance with standard scientific protocols, meaning that that letter report is inconclusive, inadequate, and unreliable. The risk of a cancer diagnosis is the single greatest and most lethal risk of exposure to dioxins of any kind. We of Citizens for a Clean Wausau also ask for a public hearing process prior to the testing to assure that the concerns of Wausau voters are fully and completely addressed. Again, Citizens for a Clean Wausau asks the city to perform more testing in Riverside Park and the Thomas Street neighborhood, and for a public cooperative process, no other process is acceptable, to determine how to proceed with that testing. Wausau’s future and well-being depend on an accurate analysis of the potential health risks. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Mr. Jerry Buer.
Jerry Buer, 503 Third Street, Wausau. A month ago at the meeting, I appeared, and I appear as both an environmentalist, and I’m proud of that label, and as a member of the Citizens for a Clean Wausau. First of all, I’d like to say we’re pleased that since that meeting, several of you on the council have indicated heightened awareness and interest in the pollution issues that are there and are ongoing, and we appreciate that. Secondly, we’re pleased that these pollution, pollution issues are being discussed more widely now in the broader media, in the community, which means that there is, there are good signs of more community involvement. For my training, I am a professional, well, retired sociologist, and when I taught sociology, quite often, I taught a course in social problems. And it’s interesting that there are a number of very, very common social problems that fall into a course like that, but through time, new problems arise. And one of the things that happens there is that a social problem takes on kind of an evolutionary life. life. A few people are aware of it, more people become aware of it, and it's a problem, but it's not a problem until, a social problem, until it's out in the broader social community. And I think that there are signs that the community, the council, and in the broader community, that there are more signs of more awareness and more people being concerned, and we hope that down the line, there will be more and more community involvement in solving or working with these problems. Finally, I would encourage the council members who so far have not indicated a great enthusiasm for this effort to, you know, consider it and consider it more deeply and come on board. And as a result, I would hope that we would end up, as the previous speaker said, with more widespread testing. That is the thing. We have, we know that there are areas in the community that need more and extensive testing. One example, I think, was recently the, with the rezoning of that area that was once part of Conifer Forestry. That is an area that has been evidently rezoned to residential from, from commercial, but who knows what's there. Possibly, the problem has been rectified, but I for one certainly would not buy a lot there and build a house until there was more testing. So again, would encourage you folks to, more to come on board, and as the community awareness grows, certainly more testing to be done. Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir. Next up, Mr. Tom Killian.
Good evening, Tom.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, and Tom Killian, 133 East Thomas Street. Thank you for the opportunity to comment. And I would agree with the other volunteer members of the group that there have been some indications of progress on this matter, and actually interest from several committees, but perhaps we find ourselves in kind of a unique awkward spot. It's kind of like having many cooks in the kitchen, but no hope of a dinner bell, perhaps. So I think the question is exactly what is the process moving forward? I mean, it is encouraging that the, that many on the council are taking interest and supporting some of the testing efforts, but what exactly is the timeframe and the process? People can continue to come from the community and speak, and we're willing to do that, and thank you for the opportunity, but we're not here to lead you. We're hoping you will lead, and I mean, all Wausonians, the same with us. And so what is the process? And if you'd allow me, Mr. Mayor, some form of interactivity like the prior speakers were afforded, would it be possible to have a, just a public involvement process? That's kind of a collaboration with the city and the people, and perhaps the DNR? I mean, certainly hope they would, they would want to attend this. I mean, that's kind of cutting to the chase of some interaction and productive that's beneficial for the city and the people. And I hope the council would like that, and, you know, not with a sleight of hand, but a sincerity of heart. And so I would request that, perhaps, if possible, no later than February, so that we could have this joint dialogue with any community member, government member, organization that would like to be involved, just so that finally, after all these years, citizens' goals and concerns can be expressed to regulators and the municipal government, but not with just the right to speak, but the right to be heard, channeling a little RFK, not original. But that would be my request. Thank you. I hope that can happen.
For the record, RFK was a hero of mine, so somebody I admired. So...
Something we agree on.
There you go. There's more to it than that, Tom. Okay, then. Moving on, starting with the consent agenda, starting with file number 18-1101 from the council for the minutes of the previous meetings for November 13th and November 27th of this year, and ending with file number 18-0108 from the Public Health and Safety, a resolution approving or denying various licenses as indicated.
If I may, I just wanted to say, I don't know if it's on or not, that if Jessica did come forth and ask for a reversal, I believe, of the denial and approval of various licenses.
Okay.
If some council member does choose to pull that from the agenda, let me know, and I'll move it elsewhere. Okay.
Mrs. Rasmussen.
Thank you. I was just going to, I guess, address Tony's comments and encourage the council to keep the denial intact. The Public Health and Safety Committee had direct interaction with Ms. Sharkey, and we also then questioned the clerk about how the questions are asked of the applicant. The applicant asked directly about her conviction history, was dishonest with the clerk's office. And so, that said, whether intentional or inadvertent, they are read of a statement by the clerk's office when they apply indicating that non-truthfulness in that process is immediate grounds for denial, and that's what took place here. And so, you know, that, I would encourage that the item be left on the consent agenda and that the denial as vetted by Public Health and Safety be upheld.
I think someone over here asked to have it polled. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. So we're going to vote, if I may, on the council agenda, but we are going to remove the item for the Public Health and Safety approving or denying the various licenses. So with that, you could ask for first, second motion.
Okay. Is there a motion as far as to keep this, to remove it?
No, it's already been removed.
Okay.
So this would be the consent agenda to vote on without the license on there.
This word always gets tricky. Okay.
I approve to approve the rest of the package.
All right. Fair enough. Do I have a second to approve the rest of the package? Second by Mr. Gisselman, so file 18-1101, ending with file number 18-1205.
You may begin voting. That motion has passed unanimously. Now we can go forth to the licensing item, if the computer will assist. And then for that, we can take a first motion and a second also. This would be for the licensing item that was removed from consent. Motion by Smith, second by Tao.
Mrs. Rasmussen.
And just for clarification, then, is that resolution worded in the positive or in the negative? So if we wish to uphold the denial, we need to know how to vote.
Correct. The recommendation is to continue, or to deny Ms. Sharkey's application for a license. So if it's in the positive, it would continue on with that recommendation from Public Health and Safety. If somebody wants to, I've got to think about this, they would have to make a motion, I believe, to deny, or excuse me, vote on her separately from the entire package of the license, because there's multiple in there. So...
So if their motivation is to uphold the denial, they would vote yes on the resolution as written?
As written. That is correct.
Okay. It seems backwards, so I wanted to clarify.
Yeah, because the resolution's written to approve or deny as presented. If we're pulling Ms. Sharkey's off separately, then I think I would need an amendment to that resolution.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
It does.[1115.15][1115.15](laughter) Okay. All of the items on this resolution are a package. All the licensed
taxi cab drivers, bartenders, everything else is all one package. So there's multiple in here. So if you choose not to do anything different, we would pass this resolution as listed, based on the recommendation of Public Health and Safety. If someone would like to make a change to Ms. Sharkey's application, because right now it's set for a denial, then you'd make a motion to amend this resolution. I was going to say adjourn.[1148.58][1148.58](laughter)
Not yet.
So I will make a motion to amend the current resolution to remove the denial for Mrs. Sharkey. Is that, is that all I need to do?
Right. And so everything else would stay the same, and then we'll vote on the regular, the separate issue.
The amendment separate?
Correct.
Okay. So you got that, Tony?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Gets tricky, everybody.
After 20 minutes of explaining it. So we have a motion by Ms. Tao. Is there a second to amend the resolution? Mr. Smith?
Smith.
And...
And that is just to exempt Sharkey from the batch?
Correct.
Okay.
Or no, not to exempt, to, well, you wanted to reverse it, correct?
Right. You have to remove her from the batch and consider her separately, right?
The motion is to remove her from the batch.
Okay. The motion is to remove her from the batch. That is correct. I don't want to put words in your mouth.
I thought we removed her earlier.
It was the entire license resolution was removed from the consent. So if I'm understanding correctly, you made a motion to address her license separately from the license resolution of Public Health and Safety. So we pulled it off of consent. We were going to vote on separately. You're asking to have Ms. Sharkey's item addressed separately from the licensing. Can I explain that?
That is correct.
So the first vote approves the rest of the batch.
Okay.
The first vote you take approves the rest of the batch, right?
Yes.
And then you take Sharkey as a separate item?
Separate item.
Would you agree with that? I have a first and a second, so you understand. Okay. So this would be to vote on all of the license that are presented in the resolution except for Ms. Sharkey's. I'm sorry about that. Okay. Ms. Tao did the first, Dennis did the second. You may begin voting. Maybe I should have adjourned, huh? That motion has passed unanimously. If I understand correctly now, we are going to vote on the...
Bring it back.
...license exclusively for Ms. Sharkey. And it looks like Ms. Tao wants to...
Mrs. Tao.
Thank you so much, Mayor. I want to share a story with all of you. When I was about 21 years old, I've never filled out an application before, and I don't know how old Ms. Sharkey is. But I remember going to this big tech company in the Twin Cities, and I filled out my application. When I got to the part where it says, have you ever been convicted of something? The first thing that came to my mind was, oh, they're probably referring to like a felony, right? And I said, well, no, I've never been convicted of a felony before. I didn't even care to read it. And so I quickly just wrote no, that I've never been convicted. And so what they did was, they made me come back to refill out my application again. And I didn't understand why. At 21, how would I know? I've been barely employed. I just got out of school and finished my little two-year certificate degree in computer networking. And I remember when I checked off no again, because I'm like, well, what? They probably misplaced my application. And then the HR lady came back out to me. She said, I'm sorry, ma'am, but we won't be able to offer you this job opportunity. And I said to her, well, why? What did I do wrong? She said, well, you know what? You checked off no here, that you've never been convicted of a certain crime. And I said, okay, well, what crime was I convicted of? And she said, well, you actually have a misdemeanor on your record. And I said, for what? And she said, well, you had a public nuisance citation, and it's actually considered a misdemeanor in the city of North St. Paul. I was young. I was the age of 18, and, you know, I was a college student, and I threw a little bit party, and I was a little bit loud. And I got a citation, but I never realized that it was considered a misdemeanor. I never even considered that the question they asked on the application was referring to a misdemeanor. I guess at the age of 21, I guess I just never even thought or considered, you know, and I foolishly just filled out the application. So when I read the information, and, you know, since we received the council packet, you know, I felt for you, you know. And if this is a person who, the last time they would have received any kind of conviction or any kind of crime or violation was seven years ago, and looking at the minutes, and Chief Bliven even shared in the minutes that he would have proved it, given, you know, how long it's been, but because she made a mistake, an honest mistake, I hope that we can reconsider that, because we want people to continue to stay employed, especially people who are trying to make ends meet and trying to earn a living. So that's, that's my, my feedback for consideration. Thank you.
Mr. Neal.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And you know me, when these things pop up, I tend to lean over at the bleeding-heart side of things. Having not, you know, attended that meeting and, and, I don't have an intimate knowledge of, you know, what it all, you know, happened there with regards to the application. The first question I had here was, okay, well, what was the degree of this conviction? Was it a big deal? Was it a horrible felony or what? I have no idea if it was, you know, parking tickets. So that makes me wonder, and it makes me hard, it makes it hard for me to vote one way or another, not really knowing that. And something like Alder Tao has described to me is perfectly acceptable as an exception. We tend to be very by the letter on these denials and approvals, but I don't really know enough yet to make a heartfelt vote. So I'd welcome more information.
Mr. Peckham.
Thank you, Mayor. I was, I think if you look down through the nitty-gritty on the agenda, it says that the licenses were approved as they came to us on a 5-0 vote. But that was the eventual package. After we voted 2 to 3, it was split on Ms. Sharkey. And several of us did feel that enough time had passed so that she probably is unlikely to do such things again. And I can't speak for anybody else, but I did find Ms. Sharkey's explanation of why she answered the way she did was plausible. And, you know, I think, I don't know if there could have been an opportunity or an explanation to her about what, how she'd answered or something like that. Maybe it would have gone differently. But I would be in favor of giving her a shot on this.
Thank you, Pat. In our haste to move along with this confusion, I did not get a motion...
Motion or a second?
Or a second on her license specifically. So I guess I had just written it down to approve or deny Jessica Sharkey's license application. So if someone would like to make the motion, Mr. Peckham, and what motion are you making to approve or deny? I just want to make sure.
I would move to approve, and I think it would be a prudent move on our part.
Okay. And is there a second to approve? And Mr. Neal? Okay, thank you. Ms. Rasmussen.
Mrs. Rasmussen.
Thank you. Periodically, this happens in Public Health and Safety, and so when these folks come into appeal, the committee sometimes will bend on those recommendations, and sometimes they don't. And we've got some established criteria for when we approve and when we deny, and that largely depends on the totality of the record. Now, in this case, the violation in question is drug possession and disorderly conduct. And so I would certainly think that those are things that when someone is, you know, arrested for or convicted of, they don't forget over time. It's pretty significant. It's not a parking ticket. And the opportunity for Ms. Sharkey to interact with the city clerk's office happens face-to-face. They're not asked about felonies or misdemeanors. The question is, have you had any arrests or convictions, yes or no? And they're given an opportunity in a face-to-face interaction to interact with the clerk's office in real time. It's not that they filled out an application and turned it in and made assumptions as they were filling it out. They're asked one-on-one, yes or no. And her answer in that setting was not truthful. If she was unclear about the question, and she wanted to say, do you mean this or that, that opportunity is there, and it wasn't taken. Now, bartender's licenses, while they may seem to some to be insignificant, allow a person to work alone in control of an establishment. Not having a bartender's license doesn't mean you can't work there. It just means you can't be alone. You can't be the sole person in control of the establishment. Now, to get that license, we have higher standards than some of our neighboring communities, and we expect those people to have a measure of integrity and honesty, because they're dealing with patrons, they're dealing with people who may be impaired, and they're dealing with the police sometimes. And we expect that they will interact honestly and in a forthright manner. And, you know, when, when stuff like that just gets, you know, glossed over and forgotten, I have concerns about what happened there. And so that's why in the committee setting, I voted to uphold the denial, because we tell people on the front end of the application process, if you're honest with us, we'll consider you. If you lie to us, you're all done. And that's what took place here. And so I think we should uphold the denial, and even though sometimes we want to give people a chance and be nice, we can't always do that.
Mr. Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Looking at the record, we've got drug possession. I don't know the extent of the drugs. I'm assuming she didn't have eight kilos of Peruvian marching dust in the trunk when she was arrested. I imagine she might have had a couple marijuana cigarettes, which is really not going to get you on the front page of the local paper. Secondly, disorderly conduct, and I can tell you this as a police officer, sometimes when you can't think of anything to arrest anybody for, you charge them for DC. I've never did it myself, but I've heard of it being done.[1795.63][1795.63](laughter) So these are, these are not...
So these are not exactly what you would call John Dillinger-type offenses. And secondly, people get a little confused. I can't believe that this individual knew they were going to run a background check, knowing that that background check would probably show that she had two convictions, two minor misdemeanors, that she would then lie, figuring, well, that's really going to make me look stupid, because they're going to run a background check anyway, and it's going to come up. I think there was some confusion here. She's not a habitual criminal, and I think that, you know, it's the holiday season and we should give this person a break. I think we should allow her to have her license. Thank you.
Mrs. Tao.
Thank you. I just want to share that, you know, we talk about our incarceration rates going through the roof, and how do we bring and rehabilitate, you know, these individuals back into our community? And I don't mean to go on a long, you know, I'm trying to preach to the choir here, but I do have some compassion, and I think that most of us on the council have some compassion. And I believe in second chances, and I believe that, you know, seven years, you know, and for this, for Ms. Sharkey to be able to come up here and address the full council and a group of, you know, community members in the audience and not sure how to tell her story, you know, I really tried to find my way to bring my personal experiences to the table, you know, to really share, you know, her, you know, my sentiments. And so I just want to say that, you know, just remember that people deserve that second opportunity, you know, and it's been a while, and I would agree with, you know, with some of the council members here who have shared, you know, to approve her license. And so thank you very much for giving me the opportunity to speak, but it's really about compassion and forgiveness.
Okay. We have a motion by Peckham, second by Neal, to approve Jessica Sharkey's license application. You may begin voting. That motion has passed 7 to 3. Jessica, if you want to come back into our office, we can assist you with those, or give us a call.
Going on to the resolutions and ordinances, starting with file number 18-1203, the mayor's appointments, we have one, and that's to appoint Claire Meany to the Sustainability, Energy and Environmental Committee. Her biography is attached for your perusal. Otherwise, it's for a two-year term, expiring in April 30th, 2021. I'll entertain a motion to accept. Motion by Mr. Neal. Do I have a second? By Mr. Smith.
Begin voting, please. Motion passed unanimously.
File number 02-1005, a resolution of the Finance Committee approving the acquisition of 237 East Thomas Street. Committee action approved 4 to 0. The fiscal impact will be $67,500. I'll entertain a motion to approve. Motion by Mrs. Rasmussen. Do I have a second? By Ms. Herbst. Karen, she'd beat you by a second.
Begin voting, please. That motion has passed 7 to 3.
File number 18-1111, a resolution of the Human Resources Committee approving the social media policy. Committee action approved 5 to 0. The fiscal impact is none. Entertain motion to accept. Motion by Mr. Neal. Do I have a second? By Mr. Gisselman. Mrs. Tao.
So I've read this six, seven-page policy on social media, and I would like to make some recommendations to, I don't know if I'm making an amendment or a recommendation to pull it back for further review. You know, when I think about policies, I think about who's going to enforce. I think about who's going to take on the responsibilities to actually go and, you know, review and respond and provide, you know, PR and, you know, communication, you know, to the public and to the community. I looked at the purpose, the first page, and then the second page where, sorry, it's the first page where it refers to Wisconsin statute 19.31 to 39, and then we go to the back of the page, and it talks about legal requirements, and it seems like things were, I'm not trying to be disrespectful here, but it just seems like it was pasted on. I have some concerns about how we talked this policy towards locally elected officials, and then we talk about city staff, but then like on the, like, second or third page, it says, well, this provision is not enforceable or something like that to locally elected officials. It just seems like it's all over the place, and I would have loved to seen maybe two separate policies. If we're going to enforce this upon city employee and staff and locally elected officials, it would have been nice to have it separated, because I get confused when I get midway and the provision states that it doesn't apply to locally elected officials. Are you saying just that section in that page? Or are you referring to the entire policy? It's very confusing, and I just, I just think it needs some more work. I did talk to Dean Dietrich tonight a little bit about the social media policy. He hasn't seen it. I've read it a couple of times, and it was still a little, all over the place for me, not very clear. You know, we talked about things about encouraging, you know, dialogue between like one elder person and another one, as long as you don't have a walking quorum. We talked about things like Mary using her personal social media to have a conversation with another, you know, elected official, and there seems to be discretion that's used in other municipalities. And I'm wondering what's the driving, you know, concern on why we are developing a social media policy for, you know, everyone across the spectrum that represents the city of Wausau. I've talked to other county board members over at Marathon County Board. They don't have a policy, and they've been counseled to use discretion. So when I take a look at a six to seven-page policy, it concerns me, because it's not very clear, you know, is it CCIT, you know, are they going to enforce this? Are they going to scan everyone's personal Facebook page or Twitter feed? Or are we just referring to just those social media sites that are initiated by the city? I mean, there's just so many areas. There's not a lot of case law that really supports, you know, what we have in our policy here, and so I would entertain, you know, any kind of feedback to see if we have sought out other legal opinions on our policy. And I apologize for not bringing these questions early on and addressing it here, but I'd love to hear a little bit more, and if we can, you know, consider, I mean, there's a lot of stuff in here, and trying to enforce all the pieces in here, I just don't see how it's laid out and how we're going to do that effectively. So thank you.
Mr. Peckham.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. With your permission, I would ask if any of the members of the Human Resources Committee, after reviewing the public input that we received on this, if they had any suggestions or any other, you know, any of the points that the citizen made, anybody's interested in picking up on any of those? I have one, but I wanted to hear from committee members. Anybody?
Anybody from the HR committee want to chime in?
Are you on HR?
I'm on HR, but Ms. Rasmussen is, her light was up.
If Tom needs to respond to Pat, that's fine. I'll deal to Tom.
Okay. You got it.
I have a separate comment.
Okay.
I was about to say she's not on HR, so.
Okay.
Well, you know, it is, there is a need for a policy. We see it, you know, more and more that there is case law, there is standard procedures that are emerging as it relates to official government-type communications, their accessibility through open records, that sort of thing, and that does translate over to elected officials. If, you know, like me, I have a Facebook page that is, you know, under my alderman, you know, position, and that is, you know, fully affected by a need for policy. I ran into something a few months ago where I thought I had a troll, you know, and I kind of booted him off my page, and then that became a subject of discussion that you really can't. I can't do that, and I booted him right back on the page. My personal Facebook pages and other things, I don't talk city stuff, I don't talk government stuff there. Local government stuff, I might talk other government, but not, not local stuff. So there is a need. This policy, much like, you know, what we do like with a handbook, you know, it's an organic instrument that can be addressed and changed ad nauseam throughout the year, when needs arise, when things change in, you know, social media, you know, issues these days and whatnot, where anything can be looked at and addressed and changed. So this is not like a statute, if you will, that, you know, we have to jump through hoops. It's the kind of thing we can look at week to week and alter. But I think there is a need for a policy to just help define what people, what is expected of them and what they can run into in terms of difficulties. So I'm for having the policy. I'm comfortable voting for this, knowing full well that
It's going to be changed.
Next month, we could be changing it.
Technology is changing all the time.
Thank you.
Mrs. Rasmussen.
Thank you. This product, I believe, is a result of nearly a year of work that's been happening between the departments, the City Attorney's Office and CCITC, recognizing that there are liabilities and legal obligations that can be created by the use of social media, and, you know, obviously, it's a necessary tool, but it comes with a distinct set of liabilities and responsibilities when it's used to speak on behalf of the city. That said, with regard to the question of managing the employees' behavior versus elected officials, we learned a valuable lesson in this council chamber a few years ago, in that HR handbook policies do not apply to public officials, and their first right, First Amendment right of free speech has got to be protected. That's why elected officials are exempt from stuff like this. We can manage through policy the behavior and the conduct of our employees. We cannot manage the behavior and the conduct of elected officials.